I would like to call the regular meeting for the planning commission to order. Today's date is August 6th, 2025, the Congress 6:00 PM. The both of them please.
All talk.
Yep.
All talk.
There. Like it. Um. Will you go next time on the two so that we can like to be joining soon after our host life?
Let me begin. I believe you're alive. Helping Irish state. And we will follow it over this town. What nature have we wrought with the people, where we go to visit first of all?
Well, I'd like to move in here. It looks like I would like to be in the upper of the oven. Being forty-three years. So. Awesome.
Yes.
Just the profile we're going to make a case of the autumn 7.5 before the public hearing, but not your communication. Right. Yes. Report from the plane, script down. We need smart communication. Section is amended to allow all officials that put into our hearing to store here. We brought in some visits and extraordinary communication about the public hearing, letting of the citizens. Where are these destroyed? Your initial special presentation, your high. None. Number six, board delegation. It's the time of the planet to our meeting that members of the public may address the public commission on matters of public interest, which pertain to the city and the power within the subject matter of the restriction of the planning commission. Members of the planet wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public meeting, unless extended by your majority of all at the planning commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes, this group. So does the planning commission please prepare a group for requesting? To speak for a form that was provided in the interest of your city council chambers and significant form of your planning commission work, when the meeting is called, we start at the podium and at that time instead of your lane in the city of that business. Would you like? Would be all communication? Hello, item seven, why are no minutes presented? The approved April 2nd minutes are still not posted on the website and no minutes have been presented for the April 16th, May 7th, and July 2nd meetings. Minutes for approval should be presented at the next meeting, not three to four months or even a year later. Minutes are the legal record. Public hearings are quasi judicial proceedings and minutes must be presented in a timely manner. Staff, please advise when your minutes will be caught up and presented. I shared this at your last meeting, but vice chair Bowie was absent again, so it's worth repeating on June 24th, vice chair Bowie appeared on Vietnamese language teaching program hosted by Chris Phan along with Garden Gold Mayor's pro temp Joe DeVine. I've provided you copies of complaints filed with both cities plus the transcript of the program roughly translated into English. This is a downright attack on our city staff leadership and community development that at times supported on slander. No one was wearing his official Garden Gold branded jacket while making comments such as, one, we criticize Westminster staff from the city manager down to, the leadership of Westminster staff is too weak between the city manager, Miss Christine Ford. I want to fire her. I want to fire her straight away and call it a vote of no confidence. Three, I am saying that the city of Westminster is losing and will lose the lawsuit because of terrible leadership and personnel among us, Miss Christine Ford, who might call for an immediate dismissal. Four, as for Miss Christine Ford, she is a club of one secretary who was promoted after the previous city manager's job. She has made the city deteriorate a lot and was covered for it by Kimberly Hove before. Five, now with the protection of the mayor, who is also protected by her counsel, no one dares to fire her. And six, the civil leadership from the city manager down has to be dissolved. Bowie agreed with Joe DeVine throughout the program and identifying himself as the planning commissioner vice chair and a member of the citizen oversight committee for major of Y and E. His comments include, one, the staff is not going to.
The city's deadlock problems in development. Three, the issue is efficiency, which is the efficiency of the employees working in the city of Westminster. When they get a job in the city, they are sluggish and they just want to pass the time to get paid. Four, the city suffers from inefficiency. What Mr. Joe DeVine said is very accurate. And five, there are too many factors in the employee factions and the employees take advantage of the differences between the factions in the city to make them sluggish and blame faction A and faction B, et cetera. Neither reported the positive changes made to community development this year. They appeared together again on July 30th and DeVine by himself several more times, doubling down on this BS. And Joe DeVine threatened to move here and run for mayor and fire everybody. And you wonder why developers are hesitant to come to our city. Vice Chair Bowie, thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
We can close the oral communication. We'll move to the matter from staff now.
Thank you, Chair Hamadi. At a previous meeting, staff was instructed to report back about the goings on at Lavender. So we do have a police detective with us tonight to help clarify what has been going on at Lavender. To be clear, the information that was previously prevented to the commission from staff was accurate as far as staff knew. The issue comes from the dueling CUPs that Lavender currently has. So they were originally approved with a type 42, which is basically just a bar license. It allows for beer and wine, no hard liquor, and it does not allow children on premises. Recently, they have up, they changed their liquor license to a base, it'll be a restaurant type license with full beer, wine, and liquor. That one would allow children on site. The issue is, is that for that license, they have to have an operating kitchen. They do not have that yet, so they're not operating under that new liquor license. They are still on the old one. There has been a change in ownership of Lavender. They were only informed of the new CUP. They were not informed of the previous CUP. So they thought they were operating under the current liquor license with restaurant. PD on enforcement thought the same thing. They were, they were operating under the belief that they had a restaurant type liquor license that would allow children on premises. So that's where the confusion came from. We have had meeting with the owners of Lavender at PD and code enforcement. And we do have, like I said, a detective here who can answer any questions you may have about what's going on onsite because staff isn't there. It is PD responding to reports.
They went through the license application. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I do. I noticed Ken on the lavender sign that faces Beach Boulevard says lavender sports club coming soon. What's that about?
That is the pickleball operation that you previously approved. They're operating under the same name, basically. So it is a separate business, but they are operating under the Lavender name.
Were we advised of that when we, when the commission approved that? I thought that was an independent business, not part of, not, not part of Lavender.
It's being run as an independent business. Staff doesn't get into ownership like that. We are only approving the use. Approving ownership at that point is actually beyond the, it's beyond the scope of what the commission is allowed to look at. We are allowed to look at the use itself, not the ownership.
How about the applicant? Who was the applicant for that?
The applicant at the time was not the, it was, he represented himself to staff as part of the ownership group of Lavender. He is not the owner of Lavender.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, yeah, since this is an issue, I don't know. Casey, do you have any questions?
Go ahead, Don.
Okay. From time to time, we've heard reports that distilled spirits have been brought in by customers and police. Have you heard this? Is that an issue?
So I checked our calls that we responded to within the past year. There have been private events where people have brought in alcohol and have had independent bartenders serving that alcohol. Back in September, the owner was contacted there. There was a baptism, so there were children present. There was also hard alcohol at a bar or at the bar there. That report was sent to ABC. Also in September of last year. Also in September of last year, there was a private party. There's unlicensed bartender serving beer and seltzers, also minors present. The host, they said they had booked the event through the owner, first of Trang, and then owner was contacted who said that that person, the host, had signed an agreement that there would be no alcohol. Obviously, there was, so that report was also sent to ABC. December, there's a school recital, children present, no alcohol. And then in May, there's two quinceañeras. On May 3rd, there is, there is one, there's tequila and margaritas, margarita mix present at a bar. That Trang owner again was contacted and admitted to allowing people to bring their own alcohol. There was also minors present. And then in May, again, on the 31st, there's another quinceañera, no report of alcohol, but there were minors present there as well.
So, so at this point, Ken, just reiterate what is allowed at Lavender at this point in the way of patrons, ages, and alcohol?
And this, we did have a meeting, like I said, with PD, code enforcement, planning, and the, and the owner. They have also been told that at this point, they cannot have anyone under 21 at the location. They did have a banquet a week and a half ago on a Friday. It was either a Friday or Saturday. We didn't get any reports. We, they were told, don't let anybody in under 21. We did not get any reports of anybody under 21 at that event. And I do believe PD checked in on that event, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe so.
So we have let the applicant know, and honestly, the most, the biggest thing for him is we're letting ABC know about these transgressions. He can lose his liquor license. So they have, we did have a sit down. They have been fully informed of what they are allowed to do until that kitchen is put in. Once the kitchen is put in, then they will operate under the new CUP, which will allow, it'll allow full liquor line, beer, wine, hard spirits, but it will also allow for people under 21 to be onsite.
If I'm not mistaken, have they not withdrawn the 47 application?
That's correct.
We have not been told that?
They have.
They have.
So the 47 liquor license has been withdrawn, which by default should make the CUP null and void.
We would allow a CUP if they just wanted a beer and wine still. They would have to switch the, as long as they operate in accordance with their license, the CUP wouldn't necessarily be null and void.
How many violations in the last six months? Of old and new. They're violating the old and violating the new. They're operating a 40, trying to operate a 47 without a kitchen, and they're also trying to operate a 42 by letting minors in. So they're violating both conditional use permits and both liquor licenses. If they had both, they would be violating all of them. So how many violations was it?
So in the past six months, there's been two.
Okay.
Any citations at all?
No, it's just documentation. And yeah, the ones with the alcohol were, were sent to the, to ABC.
Right. So ABC would be the one that would have to issue the citation if they showed up on premises. This is just from our PD department. My question for the city is, how many violations or how many times do we need to catch them violating before we bring them in and, or revoke the permit?
We don't, staff has no, yeah, staff has no way of revoking a permit.
It's right now they're operating on both CUPs, right?
No, they're operating on the original CUP only. They can only operate on the new CUP once the kitchen is installed. We have been informed because we've been in contact with the applicant. He has hired a contractor. They're supposed to come in and pull permits within the next two weeks.
Do you have, do you have authority to shut them down if they don't follow?
We do not.
You don't?
No, that would have to be ABC at this point.
What about you, officer?
What about revoking the conditional use permit? That's what I'm talking about, not the liquor license. Because they're violating both. We issued them a conditional use permit based upon a 42, and that was a couple of years ago. And then we also issued them a condition use permit based upon a 47 and getting a kitchen. They're violating both of them. What does it take for code enforcement to bring this project or to bring this problem in front of the planning commission?
Nobody at staff level has the authority to bring something up. It has to be recalled by, I'd have to check our, our procedures for sure, but it has to be recalled by either the council or the commission.
Okay.
I'd have to look at our code to make sure. That is never a staff level decision. We could, we could recommend, but we, we don't have that power.
All right. So city attorney, do you know the law and, and who is authorized to recall or revoke a CUP and what the process is?
Thank you, Commissioner Wilbert. The revocation of a CUP typically would start with the planning commission. The planning commission typically has the authority to revoke a CUP, and then that decision is typically appealable to the city council. I don't have the specific CUP in front of me to examine, so without having seen the CUP, I'm just staying in the general law as it applies to conditional use permits.
Question for the detective. The, when you went in and saw the bartender with no license, what's your authority to do at that point? Are you able to make an arrest?
No, typically would an arrest for something like that. No, we just, we document it. Basically, anytime our officers go into an ABC location, we'll document that we went there. Typically, don't issue a site. We'll just have it for documentation, and if there's violations, we'll notify ABC.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just, so the, the commission has the opportunity to bring this up. So Casey, if you want, you want to put this on the, that request on a future agenda, the revocation of the Lavender CUPs?
I would like to. I would like to ask staff or take a vote on it if you guys feel like it. I would like to have a revocation brought into a public hearing or an item on an agenda that we could vote on to revoke any, any and all conditional use permits issued to Lavender.
I have an idea. I think we should let staff give them a notice. If they don't do such a thing with it within a time period, then we'll bring it back.
Staff has given the operation a notice. We have given them a timeframe to pull the permits.
Okay.
And we have told them that any future events cannot have children. And that's why I was saying at the last event, they did have, there were no children present.
Okay.
And what is the timeframe, Ken?
We gave them a month to pull permits, and then we would reset the timeframe for when we expected construction to start, because that's done through code enforcement. So code enforcement would work with the applicant once they pull the permit to make sure that everything is proceeding with the kitchen.
That might be an option, Casey, is let's, let the, let the month run, and if they haven't pulled a permit, then Ken, you'll advise the commission?
Correct. They've had over a year, correct?
We'll give them that chance.
Well, so another month, a year and a month.
We can deal with them a month.
I agree. It's been ongoing, and I'm also troubled by this fact that the sports club was slipped in as part of Lavender with no delineation between the two businesses. Now, it may not be, it may be acceptable, but to me, I think that should have been brought forward and clarified. So, and, and I want the city attorney to take a look at this and see how it should be handled in the future. I was analyzing this particular business when it came in. I looked at it and said, it's a vacant structure. Here's an individual who wants to come in, bring in resources to the community, spend some money, and it's just an expansion of Lavender. Mr. Attorney, please. And it's just an expansion of Lavender. It's not an independent operation, and I don't appreciate that. And at this point, I think this could have been handled differently and better.
Commissioner, if I may, there, there is a clear delineation of business. We made sure that there is no through passageways on the inside of the building. They are being, I mean, they may be run by the same people, but staff never brings information about the ownership with any permit. It's beyond what we discuss. We discussed the use itself because that's what planning covers. Ownership is beyond what we cover. So we, I mean, any of the liquor license we brought, the only reason you know what the ownership is, is because they show up and talk. We never discuss ownership. I mean, we put down who the applicant is. We don't even put down who the owner is in our records.
And why is that?
It's just because we are only, planning is concerned with the use, not the ownership.
But that might just be a general information. Is there something illegal about that, attorney, that putting ownership in that information?
Typically, I cover planning commissions, you know, in various jurisdictions. Typically, each planning department is different, but many planning departments will include the name of the applicant, the business owner if it's different, as well as the property owner. That is typical.
So we could have that, so ownership could be in, be included?
There's no legal prohibition against.
There's no legal prohibition. So I think that would be helpful, especially in this case where we've had a businesses that created so many problems, and then this comes in and it just kind of slips under the radar and we have, nobody has any knowledge that this is just an expansion of Lavender. Even though there's no passage in between, this concerns me, and I think that in the future, I think there should be a clear indication if there is a, if a business is just expanding its business and not a separate entity coming in. So I would like to see that. So is that something that you're comfortable with, Ken, or does the commission need to take, take this under consideration and vote on it?
We'll actually need to talk further with the city attorney. Like I said, we normally, we don't do that kind of background research. We go by ownership on what they put on a piece of paper. We don't look into ownership. So we would have to confer and see what would be appropriate.
Okay.
For that level, because that, like I said, that is research we do not do.
Okay, so then you can check, let us know at our next commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, we'll move to the next, the agenda. Minutes, we have none. We're gonna go to the public here, number eight.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
How come we don't have any minutes to approve? Does anybody know?
I can answer that. We are working with the city clerk's office to make sure our minutes are done in the same way, and there has been a little bit of holdup with us transitioning to copy their style. Our, this, we're doing that with a lot of things you'll start to notice. Our minutes are starting to match exactly. Our staff reports are starting to match exactly. Our noticing is starting to match exactly. But there's been a little bit of a curve for us to mimic their style. So we have had multiple sets of minutes go to the city clerk for approval on their style. We just haven't gotten that approval yet. We hope to bring at least two to the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, we can go to number eight, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the interest of the council chambers and submit the form to the planning commission clerk. When your name is called, please to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant on, or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three minutes rebuttal. With the exception of the applicant or designee, all attendee may only speak on once. The planning commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allowed, allowed a time, or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions. We go to number 8.1, case number 2025-0048. Staff?
Hi. I usually get introduced. I'm a social planner, I'm the project planner for this case number 2025-0048 presentation tonight. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Tonight's presentation involves a case number 2025-0048, a request for a conditional use permit on property located at 15351, Brooker Street, units 101 through 107. The project site is located in the Brooker Square Shopping Center, which is located near northwest corner of Brooker Street and McFadden Avenue. The project site is zone C2, general business, and is surrounded by other commercial zoning districts to the north and south, and it's also surrounded by residential uses on the west and east. The subject center is accessible through existing driveways located along Brooker Street, and there are approximately 146 onsite parking spaces that are provided onsite surrounding the buildings. There are three separate buildings, but additional shared parking spaces are available just south of the existing shopping center. The restaurant was originally established in 1993 with a conditional use permit to serve onsite beer and wine in conjunction with the restaurant. The applicant is currently seeking approval of a conditional use permit to upgrade existing onsite unsold beer and wine to include distilled spirits, specifically from alcohol license type 41 to alcohol license type 47, which is also known as unsold general license. The applicant is also seeking the city's approval to offer live entertainment associated with occasional banquets. The proposed entertainment includes, but not limited to, live performers, bands, DJs, karaoke, dancing and singing during banquet, such as weddings, birthdays, anniversaries, graduation, charity, and cultural events. The restaurant is 7,880 square foot in size and occupies units 101 through 107, as I mentioned. Floor plan consists of dining area with 299 seats, a full kitchen, storage, and a restaurant. The entertainment area, which is identified in purple, consists of 120 square feet of stage and dance floor area. The proposed entertainment is about 8% of the total restaurant use. There are no other changes to the floor plan. Staff assessment, the proposed uses are conditionally allowed in C2 zoning district with approval of a CUP. Analysis of alcohol license is provided by Westminster Police Department and Alcoholics Beverage Control, also known as ABC, and includes a number of unsold alcohol license by the census tract. And crime data is provided by police department. This is the census tract map, 99.2.23. According to ABC, the subject census tract allows seven unsold alcohol license before the census tract becomes oversaturated with alcohol license. The subject census tract currently has five active unsold alcohol licenses, which includes the project restaurant. Since the proposed CUP is an alcohol upgrade, the number of alcohol license will remain the same and will not change the saturation rate. Currently, it's undersaturated. Westminster Police Department provides the crime data and service requests. According to the Westminster Police Department, within the last 12 months, the subject site has not received any calls, and they do not have any police reports to report to, to this presentation. So there is no further issues. Therefore, the Westminster Police Department do not oppose the proposed alcohol upgrade and opposed entertainment. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the planning case number 2025-0048, subject to recommended conditional approval in the draft resolution. This concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions that you may have. Additionally, the applicant is in attendance of this hearing and can answer any specific questions to restaurant operation. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The time of closing?
Their, um, business hours are nine to 12.
12, okay.
Every day.
Okay, that's not bad. Any questions? Any questions? Yeah, Christian?
I would like to know about the condition use permit of this place.
Got to speak in the microphone, Tony.
Do you have the condition you permit for this place, and does it limit to the children as we have with other premises?
The alcohol license type that are associated with restaurants, it does allow minors. So in any restaurants, families with children could go and eat and drink.
Okay. And how about the police report on this area? Do we have the police involved to make a report to see how safe the area is?
No, the police department did not provide any data because they did not receive any calls.
If I may, if the police department doesn't tell us it's high crime, it's because it is not a high crime area. They tell us in the affirmative. So if it's a high crime area, they will let us know in their report, this is a high crime area. If they don't have concerns about the crime rate, they pretty much just omit it from their reports. So they are not worried about the crime rate in this area.
In that case, can we get a written report from the police to put in our file before we do anything with this approval?
We can get a police report. We can get a police report, but are you asking us to then stay this tonight and bring it back at a future date?
I would like to have it in the file.
Anyone else that'd like to speak?
The way I see it, the police department have no issues for the last 12 months, right? So I don't see any issues right now.
And we do have a report.
We have the report, right?
Well, we have a report from PD that tells us they have no concerns with the business.
Correct, correct. Commissioners, anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna call the owner. Yes, who speaks?
Leo, okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners, city attorney, and city staff. Now, my name is Trung Vo. For those of you Vietnamese, my name is Jum Ba. I live in Santa Ana. I'm, I am an ABC licensing consultant. Today, I'm a, an authorized agent for the owner of the restaurant, White Palace Inc. Both owners sitting in the audience.
You guys come in?
The applicant owners is applying for a CUP to upgrade his type 41 license, which is a restaurant beer and wine, to a type 47, which is a general license, beer, wine, and distilled spirits. I'm here, I'm glad to answer any questions you may have from the commissioners and from members of the public. And I would like to reserve my time, if necessary, to address the commissioner again later on. Also, I would like to mention that I was a supervising agent for the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for 25 years. So I would be glad to answer any questions you have about ABC, pro bono, of course. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Are, are we gonna hear from, are we going to hear from the applicants? Are they going to speak?
No. I, I'm representing the, yes.
Okay, okay, then I have a question for you, since they will.
Oh, yes, sure, thank you.
So, within the material we received, it's, there was a notice or indication?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I have a little hard hearing, so.
I do too. Yeah. In the information we received, it states that there would be, applicant is anticipating six banquets annually, and, and smaller parties three to five times weekly.
Yes.
So are they anticipating live entertainment at the smaller parties three to five times weekly?
That is a, we don't know. That is a possibility. So the, the, the six or seven, those are usually the weddings, birthday parties, committee functions or charity functions. The smaller parties on a weekly basis, those are usually, you know, family functions or office functions that, that schedule their, their meetings or their, you know, their night, or their office, you know, dinner. So there may or may not be entertainment. That is, we don't know until we actually have the booking and a, a, a contract with the, the party that's booking the, the events.
I have a question. Will it be only seven, or will be, could be 10, could be 20? Because you stated right now, six to seven banquet means, are they reserved already, or that's what you're assuming only?
On average, that's what, the, 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 the restaurant has been around since 1993. The current owner have had the restaurant for approximately.
Around two years?
Yeah, two, three years. So on average, it's about six or seven major, like big weddings and stuff like that. That's on average. It could be more, yes. Hopefully, it is more.
If I may, one of the discussions that we did have in trying to understand the, the operation of the restaurant, what he has indicated is that when there is a smaller party, for example, graduation, whether it's a high school or college, there's a family of 10, maybe 15, when you go and have a, a party, a dinner per se, at a restaurant, you're not going to have a ban, right, for graduation. There's going, the restaurant is operating and there's going to be other customers. So it's, it's not where they are going to.
Use the whole restaurant?
Yeah, the whole restaurant for somebody's birthday party.
The only session.
Exactly. So for those, they will not going to have regular entertainment per se, right? But if you are having a wedding reception, there's certain things. They have a opening, they have eating time, they have dancing time, music time. So they will incorporate entertainment. But for smaller, small, parties that are going on during the weekdays, for birthday parties or graduation, they will not always be following entertainment.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, perfectly said.
Any other commissioners want to speak on this? Go ahead.
Just one quick question. So when it comes to business operations, we're actually, you're asking for a change in operation. You're currently not offering live music, or you currently are, and you have live music and full banquet, or are we just talking about a liquor license? Because it sounds like we're incorporating a bunch of other things and how you want to operate the business in a different way than you're currently operating it. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Sandy.
The applicant.
I want to hear from the applicant, because you're, I mean, it's time to ask him how he's running his business.
Well, the restaurant has been open since 1993, and has been having banquets and, and for, for, since 1993. The CUP, the current CUP we're requesting or applying for is to upgrade alcohol license and to get approval for the entertainment portion of it also.
Understand.
Yes.
Is that on the planning here?
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify, so that everybody who's got a microphone up here understands what they're asking for in the conditional use permit. It's not just an alcohol upgrade license, it's actually for alcohol and live entertainment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So with live entertainment, there are concerns with neighbors, there are concerns with other tenants on the property. Have any of those concerns been thought about or addressed in your plan?
That's, that is always a concern when you have banquets and when you have entertainment. I believe, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the city of Westminster requires security personnel to be present at all events. So yes, that, that issue is addressed by the owner, and will be, and the owner will comply with any provisions or anything that the city requests the owner to do, as far as making sure that the restaurant is safe and would not bother any neighbors, will not have a negative impact, you know, on the health, welfare, moral of the community.
Okay, when you have a banquet, there's gonna be a lot of people, a lot of cars to be parked. Is there enough sufficient parking for everyone to be, to be parked? You will not affect the neighbors?
I'm sorry, I, I'm a little hard hearing, so.
When you have a banquet, this is not working, is it?
No.
Okay. When you have a banquet, you can have a lot of people, a lot of cars to be parked?
Yes.
Will you affect your neighbors from not having parking, or your business neighbors?
They already, they already meet the parking, because they're already running an op, they're operating the restaurant at full capacity. It's, that's not the issue.
No, but see, right now we adding more stuff, entertainment, more people might come in.
No, same people. Occupancy is the same.
Yes.
I have a question. Regarding the area, I know that that area has a concentration of homeless people. Are there any problems conflicting with the CUP? And will the police have a chance to clear the place so that it will not conflict with the approval of the, the new permit?
It's, that is not an issue that would be dealt with as part of this permit. The police will not go in and clear an area just because somebody is having events. They deal with homeless anywhere in the city in the exact same manner.
Don't have security anyway.
I've, do we have enough time? How much is left on the applicant's time? Do we run a clock?
We have five minutes left.
Perfect. Can I ask one more question?
Go for it.
Are you familiar with all 46 points of the resolution and can meet all 46 of those qualifications for the conditional use permit?
I personally, and, and I have forwarded the 46 points to the owners.
Okay.
And we are confident that we can meet all 46 points imposed by the CUP.
Okay, perfect.
Anyone else? So at, at this time, you're not offering, there's, there's no live entertainment at your facility?
Not until we get the CUP.
Okay, so no, you had none. So my concern would be the proximity of your business to the residential to the west. I think, Sandy, is there residential to the west, Sandy? There is residential to the west. Now, it's being proposed, you anticipate six banquets annually, but you'd like more. The applicants would like more banquets. That would mean more live entertainment. And I guess conceivably, that could be from 9:00 AM to midnight. And that, that'd be a long party, but I guess it could be.
I don't think there would be any party starting from 9:00 AM to.
But it could be.
With due respect to midnight.
It could be from 6:00 PM or 6:00 PM to midnight.
That's correct, Commissioner.
That's a reasonable time, and that's right adjacent. So Ken, is there something in, in the conditions that provides some, some address that issue, that it is within close proximity to the residential? And if we had large banquets, and a number of large banquets on a regular basis, let's see.
What's municipal code on noise?
The project site is actually closer to Brookhurst.
Okay.
And they, they are, these are medical buildings. They're fairly large medical buildings. So this will, these purple buildings will work as a buffer.
Okay, good.
So north side is vacant, south is all commercial, and on the east is immediately is Brookhurst.
Okay.
And then there is a.
If, if, if I may add, as part of the ABC licensing process, the applicant is required to notify all residential units within 500 feet of the restaurant. And no, and no protest or any complaint was received by any of those residents.
And additionally, the city does have noise ordinance that would, that would be in force if they, if they were too loud. So that isn't in our conditions, because that is another part of the code, and they still have to abide by all other parts of the city's municipal code.
Okay, thank you. And then just another question, too. KC mentioned the 46 points, and point number two reads, "The subject property shall be used in the manner requested and shall be substantially, and shall substantially conform to the plans as reviewed by the government, by the approving body." I would feel more comfortable if it read, "The subject property shall be used in the manner requested and shall delete substantially, conform to the plans as reviewed by the approving body."
If I may, we always put substantially in there, because when they do pull building permits for something, there may be an ADA issue, something else that comes up in the building permit process where they are unable to build exactly to plan. So what we don't want to have them do is have to come back and amend an entire CUP because they had to make a minimal change for ADA standards, or maybe, you know, there was an electrical in the right place. So that's why we put substantially. If anything, I mean, we're not gonna let them move the bar to the opposite side of the, the restaurant. We're not gonna let them go from a 200 square foot dance floor, whatever they're getting approved, to an 800 square foot dance floor. We use the word substantially just to try to give them a little bit of leeway in case there is an issue during the permitting process that they have to address.
Okay.
I have a question for you. You, you gotta serve hard liquor, right? You, you're going to have someone licensed to serve the alcohol, right? Correct?
Yeah, yeah. ABC have to issue.
You will have somebody licensed, won't be just anybody just behind the bar and making drinks?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
You will have someone licensed to serve the alcohol, the hard liquor in your business, right?
Yes. The, the, the premise is license to serve hard liquor.
Correct, but you will have somebody special has license to serve the alcohol. Won't be just anybody go behind the bar and make some drinks and give it to anybody they want, right?
Like they need a degree in.
Bartender, license, right, license. Good.
I'll make sure.
Yeah, ABC has, ABC has requirements, they'll be the ones enforcing this, but they would be liable to lose their liquor license if they just let, allowed anybody behind the bar.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else to speak? Any comments? Okay, thank you.
Any question on ABC stuff?
We're good, thank you for your time.
All right.
Anyone else who should speak on this? Come on up.
Hello, I'll start with the obvious duplication error in the conditions list. Numbers 29 and 32 are exact duplicate. Smoking is prohibited within the interior portion of the business. So remove one, then renumber the remaining conditions accordingly. Per the staff report, the business is located in Police District P35, and there have been no calls for service for this location for the past year, but why didn't the PD indicate if P35 is a low, average, or high crime district, as they usually do? Is it because the census tract is undersaturated? A question for the PD, if they were here, is there a map of all police districts and their respective crime rates? And if so, where can we find that? For reference, the current ABC restrictions on their current type 41 license are, one, there shall be no bar or lounge area upon the licensed premises maintained for the purpose of sale, service, or consumption of alcoholic beverages directly to patrons for consumption. Two, the subject alcoholic beverage license shall not be exchanged for a public premises type license, nor operated as a public premises. Three, the sale of beer and or wine for consumption off the premises is prohibited. Four, the quarterly gross sales of alcoholic beverages shall not exceed the quarterly gross sales of food and meals during the same time period. Five, the licensee shall at times maintain records which reflect separately the gross sales of food and gross sales of alcoholic beverages of the licensed businesses. Said reports shall be kept no less frequently than on a quarterly basis and shall be made available to the department on demand. And six, entertainment provided shall not be audible beyond the area under control of the licensee. Seven, there shall be no pool tables maintained upon the premises anytime. Per this, this new CUP, any new ABC restrictions will be, need to be submitted to the city. Regarding condition number 17, why the arbitrary if alcoholic beverages are served after 11:00 PM stipulation? California Business and Professions Code 25682B1 states, "A licensee that is subject to this article shall ensure that each alcohol server, if employed, has a valid alcohol server certification. The licensee shall maintain records of certifications for inspection upon request by the department. This is requirement regardless of the time alcohol is sold. Therefore, this condition appears to be in conflict with state law. The city cannot downgrade a state mandated requirement. Even in, if the intent of this one is to provide PD access to the records, there should not be any arbitrary alcohol time threshold. The condition should just highlight the training and records requirement and state that the PD shall be furnished those records upon request. Unlike Lavender, this establishment is already a bona fide restaurant and should be able to comply with condition 24, quarterly gross sales of alcoholic beverages shall not exceed 30% of the gross sales of food and services during the same time period, and to be able to maintain current, accurate, and readily accessible records to prove that compliance." That's what you were trying to ask him, Alan. Due to the planned banquet activity, though, I would caution the applicant to not violate, like Lavender. Condition number 25, no part of the premises may be subject to an independent promoter, may be sublet to an independent promoter for any purpose. In summary, I urge the commission to approve this case. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners, you guys want to discuss anything, or? I'm gonna make a motion to move approval. Item 2025-0048.
I'll second the motion with a, with, with a, maybe, additional information. As approved, with the, with the additional information, that any information provided this evening that staff feels is relevant, where any changes need to be made to the conditions to include those.
I'm sorry, which conditions are you looking to amend?
Well, I was referring to what Terry Rains mentioned.
We just really wanted to let them know that smoking was not allowed on premises.
Pardon?
We wanted to be sure of that.
That, those are standard police, police conditions. They just, they duplicated one we didn't notice. We can, we can remove it. Yeah, we can remove it. It doesn't change anything into CUP.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion by Chair Hamadi, seconded by Commissioner Anderson, to approve case number 2025-0048. A senior offering existing off sale alcohol license into offer entertainment at an existing restaurant at 15351 Brokers Street. Number 101-107 APN 14305131 through the adoption of the resolution.
Welcome.
Commissioner Wolfert?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Vice Chair Budi?
Yes.
Chair One?
Yes.
Motion carries by zero.
Mr. Canick, please read the motion.
The commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day period.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
We have, we go to number nine, we have none. 10, we have none. Madam from staff, we already took care of that already?
We do have just one additional thing. I know that the, one of the last meetings, you approved the warehouse building over on Golden West Circle.
Correct.
That has been appealed by a law firm on SEQA, for the SEQA document. So we will be moving that to city council for the appeal.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. Number 12 matters from the planning commission, including AB 1234 reports were required.
Yeah, I have an item, Chair. Just for a commission consideration, and this has to do with oral communications, that we have a limit of three minutes. And I think that's probably based more on the city council has a limit of three minutes. And I think they have a lot more oral communications than the planning commission. And sometimes, I think we have a situation where I think it would be beneficial if people presenting oral communications had more time. And I think the planning commission has that. We don't have that many people coming together, coming to speak. So unless there's some proviso, something that's prohibiting the commission, I'd like to have this on the agenda, a future agenda to consider changing the amount of time for oral communications, for speakers at oral communications.
Five minutes?
Or, well, something to, you know, we can discuss it, but it was some, more than three minutes.
This is acceptable.
Yeah, so if we, if we can get that back on a, on a future agenda? Or, or do we need to agenda as it can? That would be a question. Can we just?
We can vote every single meeting, if I'm correct, to extend it at that meeting. So it doesn't have to be a hard, fast rule for every meeting going forward. Like if we had 30, 50 people show up, we probably don't want to have a five-minute rule set in place. We could say, you know what, we only have three people in the audience today, let's give them five minutes and we can vote on that before we even open oral communication. Because it can be extended. It's, it's actually what was read into record that we as the council, or as the commission can extend that. But to your point, I agree. I think the public should have more time to speak. The question is just how do you want to go about doing it?
What, what's the attorney, what's your thought on that?
Either, either is acceptable. You can either amend the rule globally, in which case you need to notice it for a future agenda and vote on extending the time across the board, or you can do it on a case-by-case basis as needed.
Commissioner, would you like to give Terry two minutes to speak?
Pardon?
She asked for two minutes.
We're talking about Lander.
Would you like to give her two minutes to speak? Commissioner, would you?
For what?
She wants to speak for two minutes, would you let her?
I'm pickable two minutes, but I'd like to weigh in on Lander a little bit more.
I'm not opposed.
Yeah, that's, that's.
You got two minutes?
Commissioners, if I could be heard, that item is closed, the applicants are no longer here. They would not be able to respond to anything.
General public comments.
Okay. Your general public comments, if you wish to reopen general public comments, that is within your discretion.
I guess we'll save it for the next meeting.
Okay, well, okay, Casey, that's fine. If, if the commission's okay with just, we can take a look at the audience and then we can at that time say, at this meeting, the, the time limit shall be, and come up with a number, based on the number of people.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My problem with that is we don't know ahead of time, we get here, we work really hard to just get three minutes, and then we say we get five or something.
We would let you know before you start, how about that?
Then it's, then it, then it would sometimes easier if the applicant doesn't have to speak or the speaker doesn't have to talk so fast, we, we can, we can absorb more.
That's why I gave you coffee.
Thank you.
Can we have a question?
Yes, what?
Recommendation to our meeting here, we, together, we make our decision. However, the applicant have a chance to appear it. And in that case, if they appeal to the city council meeting, and the city council meeting will have a meeting, and they, I recommend the city should inform all of us here about the, the issue that we have been decided and has been revoked or changed by the city council.
We can, we, we have been doing that. I mean, if the commission remembers, I did report about the other two appeals, what the city council decision was and why they came to that decision. And we do inform you at meetings like I did today, if any planning commission decision is going to be appealed. So we are reporting that information currently.
I recommend that we, all of us here has to be informed accordingly so that we can attend a meeting related to that issue.
Well, that, and we did, we, I have told you that the next one will be appealed. If we have a date, we can let you know, but sometimes the way the meetings fall, we don't know when the, I mean, if we have a month between meetings, sometimes the appeal falls outside of when I can tell you. So that is why I try to inform you at these meetings, that there is an item that will be appealed and the agenda will, if we do go a month between meetings, the agendas would be posted that you could check to see if that appeal came up in that time period.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one more thing. Thank you very much, staff, for tonight. Really appreciate the hard work. It's, it's a pleasure to serve the community with you. So thank you for your hard, hard work and all the effort.
Very nice.
Amen.
Okay, we're going to go to adjournment. It's right now time 6:59 PM. We adjourn. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.